Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening. Our purpose this evening is to give our candidates, our four candidates, who are running for the Leavenworth City Commission, an opportunity to talk with you, the city voters. I want to thank both the Leavenworth Public Library for hosting us. I want to thank my team, Kelly Butler and Jeanette Lady. Been great help throughout all this. My wife, Denny Davis, is the timekeeper. Eric Price is from Rogue Creative. He has faithfully been our videographer for a couple of years now. We appreciate the work that he's given us. And I want to welcome the candidates from your left to right. Joe Wilson, Sam Maxwell, Steve Clay, and Rebecca Hollister. Bruce Schaffner and Jason Redmond chose not to participate this evening. I'd ask you to please silence your phones if you haven't done that already. And certainly I'd ask that you be civil if we have any disagreements with the candidates or with each other. I want to keep it civil. A little bit about the flow this evening. We're going to start with a five-minute introduction by each of the candidates. You'll get signals as time goes down. You want to show them what you're going to show them. So you're going to get one minute, a 30-second, a 10-second, and then finally stop. After your introductions, then we'll have the chamber questions. I'll ask four questions. You have two minutes to respond to those. Then I'm going to open up to the audience and you'll have two minutes to respond to the audience questions. Audience, as you ask questions, I ask two things. Please ask your candidate, ask the question that all candidates should answer, not just simply a pinpointed question. Address it to the whole candidate's slate. And then number two, if you have an introduction statement to kind of introduce your question, make it short. Get to the question. We're here to hear from them, not from you and me. So please make your introduction short. If you're wondering, I will be rude and interrupt and ask you to get to the point. And then we'll have wrap up with a one-minute closing statement. So we've got a five-minute introduction of the chamber questions, two minutes to respond. Audience questions, two minutes to respond per candidate, and then one-minute closing. Candidates, any questions? What we're going to do? Are you all set? Joe, start with your introduction.
Hello, thank you for coming. My name is Joe Wilson. I am a local business owner and I'm also, I'm running for city commission. I came here in 1985. I always tell the story and people get tired of hearing it, I'm sure, but I think it's a very funny story is my father was stationed in Europe. We thought we were going to Hawaii. We ended up in Leavenworth, Kansas. At the time, I was super disappointed. There's no beaches here. But I've come to grow, come to love this community. I graduated from Leavenworth High School. I went through the JROTC program. I went to KU on an Army ROTC scholarship. I worked as a corrections officer. I served as a deputy sheriff and then I started my own business. My whole career has been about servant leadership. It's about doing what's best for our community and doing what I can do to help our community. I didn't wake up one day and say, you know, I'm just going to be a politician. It wasn't my goal and I don't consider myself a politician. I'm a business person. And I think we have some issues in our community that need to be addressed. We are the first city of Kansas, but I don't believe that we stand out as the first city of Kansas. Our downtown is, appears to be on the way down. We don't have enough businesses. Property taxes are high and we need, there are a number of things that need to be addressed. My platform is about being pro-business and pro-growth. We also need to be pro-first responder. Those people that run into danger, we need to make sure that we take care of them because they do take care of us. And so I want to make sure that part of my platform is understanding that how can I, what can I do to help them do their jobs better and to keep us safe? We need to find ways to bring people into our downtown. In the last seven years, we built 28 houses and we've seen our downtown decline. And we need to find ways to bring people into our community. We cannot cut ourselves and cut our budgets to prosperity, nor can we tax our population to prosperity. It's all about economic development and about growth. What can we do to attract people to our community and bring people here? Because then we can spread the, the property taxes amongst everybody. We can spread the sales tax amongst everybody and that's how we're going to grow our community so that you and I don't have to continue to pay all those by ourselves. Thank you.
Sam, thank you.
Sam Maxwell, nice to meet you guys. Thank you for coming out. I appreciate that and it shows you guys care. Fourth generation Maxwell in this town. So we got here in 1920 sometime around then. I mean, this, this town is my home. It's in my blood and I want to make sure it prospers. It's been kind of on a decline and I have a unique background in infrastructure. I build roads for a living. I do sewer, storm. I am your guru when it comes to anything infrastructure is concerned with. We do need to grow. We are on a decline in population. We need to bring some housing in that people can afford. I mean, that is, that is something tremendous that we have not been able to do yet. Last house we built, I think is worth $700,000. How's a regular man going to afford that? I know, I live on the north end of town. My house is very reasonable and I think we can take the north end of town and turn it into something very prosperous for a younger generation that wants to work and do things. Working with local developers and builders and seeing what they would need to start kicking some stuff off and get the ball rolling. See if we can't attract some of that younger generation. But beyond that, you know, my history, my family's been here a long time. I just want to see my town grow and, and continue to be prosperous.
Well, good evening and again, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for allowing us to come tonight and, and express our, our background and what we stand for and so forth. And we like, we all appreciate you all coming out on this rainy night to come out and hear us pontificate a little bit. It's kind of interesting to listen to Joe and Sam and Rebecca because we've, we've had an opportunity to give our pitches several times. So we're kind of bored with each other's pitches. So hopefully it'd be something new for you. But the thing is, one of the things you'll find out is, as a group, we're pretty much, I mean, there's not a whole lot of difference between the things that we want to try to do for Leavenworth. So a little bit of background on myself. First of all, you know, I put this out there. You can read through it. I'm going to repeat some of that. But the key thing is that on, on who am I? Well, I will tell you that a number of years ago, I wrote a book and it was called, Who Are You in Four Words? And I went through that process and what I came up with is that first and foremost, I'm a Christian. Second, I'm a husband. Third, I'm a father. And at the time that I did it, I said I was a soldier. Well, I've retired from the army since then. So now I'm just, I consider myself a patriot citizen. The, uh, my family has lived here since 1999. My wife, Elizabeth, sitting in the back, back there. We've been married for 46 years. By the way, it says 40, 44, but it says fiscal responsibility on the back. Truth in advertising, these are from the last time I ran. So it's two years old, but I didn't want to spend the money, you know, telling you the same thing, just, I'm, you know, been married two years longer. Okay. Both my daughters graduated from Leavenworth High School and graduated from Kansas State University. Now, by the way, when I retired from the army in 2006, we chose to live here because we love the community and also because we're from Texas and we really like to have four seasons, not just one or two. So we retired here. My background, I was an army officer for 26 years. I worked for 17 years in the Combat Studies Institute at Fort Leavenworth. And from that experience, I have a great deal of leadership experience, resource management experience, planning and operations experience, education and training experience, human resource management, logistics, sustainment, and all the rest of it. Research and analysis as well. The very types of skills that you think, I think that you would want to have for someone sitting on the city commission, because we have a lot of challenges as we're going to talk about in this community right now. We've got to have some new ways, maybe not some of its new ways, but we got to think about how we get there. And it's not going to be easy because we've got a lot to get done in the next, you know, 20 years or so. And hopefully all of us will be sitting on the board for that long. The, the things I'm most concerned about are on the back here. You know, lowering taxes, really what I mean by that is lowering the tax burden on property owners here. And I'm going to sound like a broken drum here or, you know, I'm going to repeat myself a number of times. And it's not anything that these guys haven't said already, but the key to all these solutions right here is economic development. We've got to come up with ways to get, you know, a Tesla factory in here or an Intel factory or something that's going to get a lot of people to work and bring in a lot of tax revenues for, you know, property taxes on their end, plus sales taxes and so forth. So we can get the kind of money coming into the, the community that we can do stuff like replace a $128 million sewage treatment plant that's going to be gone in eight years. Okay. So that's, all of these things are going to be solved by that more or less. And I can't stress that enough. But the other things I'm, like I say, fiscal responsibility. What are we spending our money on? Is it wants versus needs? We need to spend on our needs right now and not worry too much about the wants because we've got a lot of challenges facing us that you'll hear about. Improving roads and other city infrastructure. And of course, I say, is this small business on there? But as I've already stressed, it's not just small business. I really want to say, when I got here in 1997, all these little storefronts had businesses in them. All of them. And so many of them are, are empty now and, you know, the old Sears place up there is virtually gone now. And that was a going concern when I first got here. So we've got to get not just small business back into Leavenworth, but big business as well. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Rebecca Hollister. I'm one of your candidates for Leavenworth City Commission. What I want to do tonight with my opening statement is first tell you a little bit about myself and then talk to you about what I stand for and finally close with what I hope I can contribute to the city commission. My family came here in 2008. My father was in the army and my parents eventually retired here. So I am a graduate of Leavenworth High School, 2017. And at the time I had the mistaken, but somewhat common perception that in order to be successful, you have to leave your hometown. So I went to Washington DC and attended Georgetown University for college. And then in 2020, something unexpected happened called COVID and we were sent home. And so I came back to Leavenworth and I was involved with a lot of service at the time. I did some food banks and it was during that time and seeing the community come together that I realized that I wanted to make Leavenworth my forever home. So once I graduated college, I moved back here to Leavenworth. I lived in the Broadway Lofts for a bit and now I rent half of a duplex in Leavenworth as well. And the reason why I want to run for office is because I want, like myself, others to feel that Leavenworth is a powerful prosperous choice to start a family, to start a business. I want to show that involvement in organizations that I've been involved in like CASA, LV Arts, the Humane Society, the NAACP, that it is so fulfilling and that it can make our town so much of a better place. And so I want to make sure that other young people and, you know, people who are thinking about retiring here, know that this can be a successful, is, can be a place where you find success. There are a couple of roadblocks that our community is facing. Being the fourth person to say this, it might sound a little dull, but it has to be said, economic development. Everybody is right. That is the biggest hurdle that we are facing right now in our community. We still have an empty business and technology park. We need to do something with that. We need to either get businesses in there or cut our losses and do something else with it, maybe housing. I don't know. We need to figure that out. Downtown revitalization. We need to make sure that the current small businesses there feel supported while also ensuring that we bring in new businesses. Affordable housing at any stage of life, whether you rent, whether you're a first-time homeowner, whether you've lived in your home forever and you don't want to be taxed out of your home, and whether you're a senior on a fixed income looking to still live independently. We need to make sure everybody has access to safe, affordable housing. And finally, public safety, things like, that includes things like roads and sidewalks and our stormwater infrastructure, as well as situations like the fentanyl crisis and the crime that we face in Leavenworth. We need to make sure we're supporting our police and using our resources to ensure that we can fix that as well. I also just want to say that I plan to practice active transparency if elected. It's true that a lot of the times documents like the budget and meeting minutes, they're made public, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's easy to find or easy to understand. As a commissioner, I will make sure to keep going to voters and continuously explaining what we're doing and holding myself accountable for what we're doing as well. And lastly, I also want to emphasize collaboration. This race has been super nice so far. Everybody up here, I've had a lot of conversations with. It's been wonderful. And I think that collaboration in the city is going to be our way forward because you don't get anything done if you're just arguing all the time. So I'm definitely willing to collaborate with others, even those who disagree with me. So I'm excited to talk about the issues tonight and thank you all so much for being here and for being concerned citizens.
Thank you, candidates. Before I ask the first question, let me just remind us, the nature of our elections for city commission. It's open seats, all three. We have three, everybody gets three votes because they're trying to fill three seats. Three of the current commissioners are not running for reelection. So we're running for new seats. The top vote getter is, gets a four-year term and becomes mayor pro temp. So they, he or she becomes part of the cycle for the annual turnover of the mayor. And the third candidate with the least of those three only has a two-year tenure. So that's a little bit of unique about Leavenworth City Commission. Did I get that right? I think so. All right. So let's go on to question number one. Came back to you? Okay. We'll start at your end again. All right, Joe, the first question. According to the Data USA and second source, World Population Review, the city and school populations are declining. If you believe this is a problem, what specific tools should we be employ, be employing to halt and/or reverse these trends, Joe?
So our population is on a, is on a steady decline. I think we can see that just by the number of homes that have been built over the last seven years and the number of businesses that are empty. I think a big part of that is because we don't have enough housing in our community, especially enough affordable housing. When we determine that a $300,000 home is an affordable home, that's a problem. My, many of you know my daughter, she's here. I don't think she could afford a $300,000 home. We need affordable housing. We need multi-tenant housing and we need find ways to put these things into our community so we can attract and bring people in. You know, a lot of people say, well, you know, we need to have businesses here to attract people in. And people will say, we need people here to attract businesses in. It's the chicken and the egg. At the end of the day, we need both and we need to start somewhere. And there are a number of tools out there to help us achieve these things, whether you choose to look at a RID or a TIF as the incentivize people. And I'm not against incentives to bring people or developers into our community, but we need to do something to get jump-started. And I think it starts with finding people who want to build in our community, who want to be here.
Yes, we are obviously on a state of decline when it comes to population, but we have some wonderful people in the community who are already kind of planning to start working on North Leavenworth with some of the housing we got up there. We got some apartment buildings that I think they're actually kind of in the works. We've also been looking at some of the codes and enforcements that we've been doing on people. I sit on the planning and zoning board, so I get a little bit more on the insight on what's kind of going on, what's coming to town. So I've been seeing a lot of businesses say, hey, these codes are not working for us. We can't, we can't do anything with these. So the city has inclined to start a task force. I sit on that task force with a couple of businesses in town, a couple of residents. And we're working, going through our policies and our procedures to make it easier for people to build things, to get permits, whatever they need. We need to be the city of yes, saying, hey, yeah, we want your business. We'll bend over backwards to get it done. We cannot afford to say no to anything anymore. We need to get people here, whether that be a business or residence. I think we have a golden opportunity up north to start redoing some homes up there and make affordable housing for people. We've got a Panasonic center going down there south. They keep growing. They're going to want to go somewhere. They're going to need places to live. I say, let's, let's just get after it and start going to town and getting some of this stuff going.
As I mentioned, I'm going to sound like a broken record. Or did I say broken drum? One of the two. Again, I can't emphasize enough that if we're going to get the population to grow in Leavenworth, we've got to attract business. And that this, we, these guys just said that as well. Until you start getting people interested in coming here to, you know, have a plant where you're in, in small businesses, we're just not going to get there. And one of the things that, that for small businesses in particular, that I think is an issue for us is when people come to Leavenworth and they drive around and say, hey, you know, maybe I'd like to establish a small business here. Drive downtown, drive down Delaware. We spent a lot of money, what, eight, nine, 10 years ago fixing that place up? Go look at the sidewalks now. Go look at the curbs. Go look at the grass growing up through the cracks. They're going to drive down through there, the roads. They're going to drive down through there and go, do I really want to set up a business here? And I've heard people say, well, you know, we can build, you know, I don't mean to denigrate anything, but as an example, pickleball court. We build a brand new pickleball court. Everybody, oh, this is great. Well, yeah, it is great. The problem though, is that we spent, I don't know how much money in the pickleball court, but it can only be used six months out of the year. And how many people are going to use it in a year? Half the people in Leavenworth either going to walk or ride on the roads. And yet we're, and we are improving some of the roads, but we're not improving them fast enough. So, and the only way we're going to get there is to bring in a lot more money from not just taxpayers, property owners, but we got to get more business in here. So like I said, it's a broken record, but that's what we got to have.
Yeah, population is definitely an issue. USD 4053s enrollment is down about 140 students. My vet actually got a new doctor the other day and she was telling me that she has chosen to live in Weston and there are CGSC people who are here for that, who live in Platt because they can't find affordable housing that works for them here. And that's a huge problem. So it is a housing problem. Joe briefly mentioned RHID or RID. That is a development, a developer incentive. And it's really hard to say if you're for or against it because they're all so different and you have to look at the location and see, okay, is this an area that needs to be developed and that we need to have incentive to develop? But it's a tool in our toolbox. There's also grants that the city does offer to first-time homeowners to fix up their houses. We need to be publicizing those as well. One other issue that I think we need to emphasize is that we need to make sure that this is a place where families do feel like they can come and raise their kids. So that means activities for kiddos. I was at a door the other day and somebody said that there seems to be quite a lot for younger kids to do and a lot for adults to do, but not so much in the middle. Things like the skate park and maintaining that, as well as, you know, we have a new splash pad. We need to make sure those areas continue to be safe and continue to be kept up so that families feel like this is a really great community to raise their children. So there are a lot of different things in regards to population growth, only some of which the city can control. But continuing to use the tools that we have will ensure that maybe we can do something about this issue.
Thank you very much. Why don't you hold on to it? Please, we'll come back this way. Question number two. The city's infrastructure, as many of you already said, is deteriorating. For example, there's approximately 100 storm water replacement projects, yet the city can only complete four projects per year. The city's wastewater treatment plant must be placed within the next eight years at a cost of $120 million. Is the city's infrastructure on your agenda? And if so, what will you do to address these issues?
Yes, it is very much on my agenda and for me, it falls under public safety. And that is because, for example, I went and checked out the sinkhole at Sixth and Chestnut and then Sixth and Walnut. And it was, it was pretty surprising. I mean, I heard about it, but seeing it in person was something else. And there were people who were coming to the city commission meetings. They were worried about not just their homes, but about when kids play and about even, you know, animals falling in there. So these are, these are critical systems that we need to make sure that we can maintain. Now for stormwater, there is a utility fee that certainly helps, but we also need to make sure when we're budgeting that we're thinking about both the long-term and short-term emergency situations like that one. As far as the wastewater treatment plant, definitely that's going to be something we're going to have to look into multiple funding sources and see if we're eligible for any federal grants or different funds like that as well. And then as far as roads and sidewalks, you know, we have to see, is chip and seal effective or do we need to look at another method that's going to help more over the long term? There also is, I finally found kind of what I was looking for. When individuals report a pothole or if they report that something is wrong, I would love for there to be a way where they can check and see where that project is in a queue of some sort so that they don't have to keep following up. And because it causes people a lot of anxiety, particularly older people who stay at home a lot and maybe don't have the resources to go out. And so I think we need to be more transparent about our infrastructure as well. And I think that will contribute to public safety too. So basically looking at diverse funding sources and making sure that what we're doing is not kicking the can down the road, but solving problems right then and now when we have them.
Yeah, I, I would echo much of that. I do think, see it as a safety issue and also see it as an issue going back again about what's going to draw the population to, to live here. I agree wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly about, about housing. I've just recently stumbled into this RHIA questions because there was a big hoopla over in Lansing about it. And I'm not where I want to be yet as far as finding out about it and how to, how to make it work for Leavenworth if possible. I do know that Basar and Tonganoxi have been using that quite successfully. And oh, by the way, one of the things that, that, why we do need that additional housing is because Leavenworth is already a bedroom community for Kansas City. And if you notice, if you drive down through Farley over to 435, you're seeing Kansas City growing north. You're seeing a whole bunch of new construction. There's a, there's a, you know, Burger King, a bunch of apartments and a whole bunch of new construction, baseball fields, everything. So it's coming this way. And if we can get people out here to build more housing, affordable housing, as we discussed, then they aren't going to have to drive, you know, all the way into Kansas City. They got their own job here. They can buy a house here and live here and not have to drive into Kansas City. But I go back to, to the roads. I just don't think you're going to get a whole lot of people wanting to live here when they have to drive through a bunch of pothole roads. Now, again, you know, Fourth is looking pretty good, but you drive off on the periphery of Fourth and some other places and it's not looking very good at all. So we've got to get the, we got to get the roads fixed as well. But again, it costs a lot of money to do that. And I've already addressed the sewage treatment plant. That's going to take a lot of money. And I already know that Scott Peterson's already looking into getting things like federal funding, state funding to help replace that or at least refurbish it as best as possible.
Infrastructure. I love it. That's what I do. So this is really going to just circle back to us with economic development. We have pretty much cut the city's budget down to basic functions. We run $2 million a year on mill and overlay projects and we get as many streets as you can do. And that's cutting two inches of asphalt off, putting two inches back in and make it a smooth road. They use the chip and seal to buy themselves a little bit more time on some of these roads because they cannot afford to do it. Then you go into the stormwater projects. For a 62-inch pipe, it's roughly $700 a feet to install. That'll get you 300 feet of pipe for about a million dollars. Everything costs so much and we don't have the tax base to pull from. We really, really need to bring in some people and incentivize as much as we can to get these things going so we do have a future. The more people we have living in this town, the better it will look, the better it will be. As far as the $120 million sewer treatment plant, we have four non-taxable entities that use that, up to including us. I think we need to have a hard discussion with those people. That would be Fort Leavenworth, the US Penitentiary, St. Mary's, and the VA. And those are condensed living areas dumping a lot of wastewater into our system. We need to have some conversations. These people need to help start carrying more weight than what they are.
So I can just echo a lot of what they're saying. The thing is, the previous commissions and not to cast negativity on them, they spent a lot of time cutting and cutting and cutting in order to appease their base or whoever they're trying to appease and not raise taxes. And that's not a bad thing. The problem is it kicks the can down the road. And, and that's not a bad thing. The problem is it kicks the can down the road to where now we have to solve the problem. And rather than working to fill the downtown and doing the things that we need to do to bring businesses in, you know, we are now trying to solve problems with no money and trying not to raise taxes on people. And like I said earlier, we can't cut our way to prosperity. We can't tax it. So I think the way that we solve our infrastructure problems, problem is a lot like Sam was saying, we need to find ways to bring people into our community. We have a lot of nice businesses downtown. I believe we have three quilting shops. I don't think I've ever stepped in foot into one. We have, uh, some photography studios. I don't think I've ever stepped foot into one. Not because I don't appreciate them. It's just not something that I need on a pretty regular basis. I talked to, uh, a really smart person that I consider mentor, who suggested what we need downtown is an experience. What can we do to bring, make downtown an experience that are going to draw people in from outside of our community? Because they're not going to come here just because we have a really nice steak shop or steak restaurant or, or what have you. We need to bring something in downtown that's going to draw people in. And so I think that's the first problem that we need to solve is how do we make our downtown an experience?
All right. Um, all three, all four of you have made it clear that you see a relationship between economic development, property taxes, infrastructure and so forth. So I want to call an audible on the question I gave you for question number three, which basically had that. So let me ask, since you've already discussed economic development and property taxes and so forth. Let me ask, can economic development be done in isolation? Or must there be collaboration with the rest of the county? That's part one. Uh, if so, what will be your role? Second part, how, uh, would you invigorate, uh, growth or support to Leavenworth County Development Corporation, LCDC, and the other economic development agencies? Let me give you a second to think about it and whoever feels ready, I'll let you start. I'll let you start.
I'm happy to start. Yeah. Um, I think that economic development is something that has to work hand in hand, not just with our city and our county, but the other cities around us. We need to work closely with them to help, because what's good for them is also good for us and what's good for us is also good for them. We need to work with our state representatives, our senators also, to see how they can help us bring new businesses into our community, because that's what's essential. The problem that I see is everybody's so adversarial and territorial that we're not working together. And that's the first way we solve the problem is we start, so we put down whatever party politics it is and we start working together. And that's why I've always been about the people. I have no party that I'm loyal to. I'm loyal to the people. The LCDC question is a great question as well. I'm on the board for LCDC. I see the value in private partnerships, working with, uh, government in our community. We have commissioners on the board. Um, I've taken a lot of heat for being on this lately. That's gotten a lot of negative attention, um, at the county courthouse. But LCDC is designed to try to find ways. They've been instrumental in bringing Hills Pet Nutrition here. They've been instrumental in keeping cereal ingredients here. These are some of the top taxpaying entities in our community. And for some reason, people don't understand their value. We're not making money in the back rooms. Let me tell you what, if we, if somebody is, I'm not getting my cut. I'm not making money when I'm at an LCDC board meeting. I'm losing money because I'm not doing my number one job. But I believe in this community so much and I believe that everybody on that board, is a philanthropist that cares about our community and they're willing to invest their time and their money into helping our community grow. And I think that's where growth starts.
Could you repeat part of that? Just?
Oh, sure. Can economic, can economic development be done in isolation or must it be done countywide? If so, what's going to be your role? And then secondly, what would you do to invigorate LCDC and the other economic development agencies?
So some of it can be done in isolation, like certain little projects in the city. We could, we could do a, just a city kind of tax abatement. RHIDs, you need the county and the school to sign off on because it affects them more than it does us. We are a tax, sales tax revenue based city. 19% of our income comes from property taxes. 62% of our income comes from sales tax. The rest of it's from fees and so on and so forth that the city charges for permits or fines. But a large majority of our tax income is from sales tax. So bringing businesses here, yes. Or just bringing people here who are going to go to Walmart and spend money. Yes. LCDC, I love it. Granted, it's a little hard to grasp sometimes, but if you break that off and try and get your own economic development person in each entity, say for the county, the city, different other cities, which LCDC works for all of them. I mean, it's a countywide thing. You're talking a salary of about $150,000 per entity. So you're going to be spending more money trying to support someone in that individual office. Instead, we have a wonderful group of guys who come together. They get private donations. They get a little bit of money from the city and they bring in businesses. It might take them a little bit because it is big business. It is hard to get them off dead center. It is hard to get them here. But once you get them here, it is a great relief. Main Street, they can work on some of the smaller businesses downtown. I mean, these entities are good for our community development. If anything, we need to be more supportive of them.
Couple of things here. Yeah, I, I agree that you, you can, uh, get together with, with the county and Lansing and Basar and so forth. And we need to do that as where possible and where it makes sense to do that. Uh, of course, my primary concern as a city commissioner is, is Leavenworth. Um, and let me share a couple of things with you, uh, and I'm going to kind of ramble here for a moment, but just bear with me. Uh, one of the things that I talked with, uh, Pat Proctor about a number of years ago was this bridge, the, 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 the Big Blue Bridge is going to be replaced. And, uh, one of the things that the, the state of Missouri has, uh, said that they would do now, whether they're going to fall through it or not, it remains to be seen. But assuming that it happens, they want to, uh, be able to build a main road, a heavy duty road from 435 to this part of the county. Now, some people are pushing for, uh, five, some people are pushing for 45 up through Farley, uh, to the big new bridge, which is where I want it to come. And, uh, I would very much like to see, and I don't know if you noticed, but when they redid Metropolitan out there in front of, uh, Fort Leavenworth a number of years ago, that road is built like an interstate. That is a heavy, heavy duty road. Uh, so what I would like to see is that road come up through Farley, uh, uh, on Metropolitan and then have another road that goes down the west side of the city. Cause oh, by the way, that's the only way we can grow. We can't grow north. We can't grow south and we sure as hell can't build in the river. Okay. So if we could build a, a major thoroughfare down there, you have all that heavy traffic. If we get a Tesla plant or whatever on the west side of the, and you're not bringing it up through, through the middle of town, all that heavy traffic, uh, which may mean that we end up having to move the industrial park maybe farther north in that open, you know, some farmland out there rather than where we haven't built RHID, uh, RHID housing there. Uh, I'll share with you the other part of my vision here shortly because I've only got 10 seconds left.
Thank you. So for the first part of the question, I think that Sam said it best. Um, we can certainly do parts of economic development without needing the county and other cities' support. But I think an ideal situation is one where, for example, recently at a city commission meeting, the county actually came and they all sat down and they collaborated and that was, I think was very beneficial and everybody was very civil. Um, so I definitely think that there is room to partner with them, but we also need to take initiative as a city. Um, back when we had a real initiative to bring hotels to the city, that was really beneficial. So we need to make concentrated efforts like that. Um, I think this is a great question because everybody can say they're for economic development, but how do you do it? I think as far as our partner organizations, they are incredibly valuable because when you, if you defund them and bring it in solely internally, you lose a lot of diverse funding sources from other places. But what we need to do with these organizations, so they can stop spending time justifying their existence, is sit down and give them specific attainable goals that are mutually agreed upon, that matches the level of funding. And if the goals are met, then the city could potentially fund them more in the future. Um, but it all, even though these organizations, LCDC and Main Street, they work toward different things and the CBB, they all should be geared toward a strategic plan. There is a strategic plan that Leavenworth adopted. Um, it goes till 2030 and I'm working through reading that right now. So we need to make sure that we are working in tandem. And then we need to make sure that we're evaluating the benefit of these organizations so that if we do decide to increase funding to them, we can bring that back to voters and say, hey, here's why we're doing this. So, um, certainly agree to paraphrase Dave Ramsey, we have a income problem. Um, so we can, you know, cut the live long day, but at the end of the day, we need to have this economic development to grow and expand our income.
Thank you. Steve, uh, Steve, if you'll go, go first on the next question, please. We're going to switch gears a little bit. Uh, some experts suggest that community policing is a solution to serving our underserved communities. Uh, what does community policing mean to you? And is it a solution to serving our underserved communities? Steve, would you please start? Yeah, let me address one other thing real quick. Much of what she just said here, uh, I agree with, and that's what I was going to tell you. Uh, I, I think she's dead on. We've got a number of, you old soldiers in here will know what I'm talking about when I talk about operations orders. Right? You bring in the staff and you do the analysis and so forth, and you come up with a plan and you, and you, uh, develop a number of subunit missions and everybody works toward that common goal. And I think that's exactly what we need to do with things like the Chamber of Commerce, uh, uh, the, you know, Main Street, LCDC, et cetera, working with the, uh, the city, uh, commission and, uh, city, uh, staff to come up a vision for the future that, that we can all work toward to achieve that we're, that we're not doing anything at cross purposes, uh, but we're working toward trying to achieve that, that final goal. So I think you, you're exactly on there. As far as community policing goes, I actually had to look that up to determine, okay, what is it? And I looked it up and essentially it's, it's a, it's a way of, uh, working with the community, the police department, working with the community uh, in ways where, uh, the community has an opportunity to, to provide input. And it's not just a matter of going out and, you know, patrolling and arresting people or whatever. And I think, I think that's exactly the way you want to, uh, operate a police department. Now, one thing I will, will also say, um, that I'm not for, uh, a lot of stuff that, that we're seeing in other parts of the country right now with things like cash free bail and all that sort of thing. I think that, that actually increases the amount of, uh, uh, of crime that you have in the city. But having the police going out there, talking with the folks, working with them to, uh, to try and understand what the issues are and coming up the solutions to those issues along with other parts of the community. Uh, I think that's, I think that's a very effective way of, of policing the community and cutting down on crime. Sam, please, Sam, please.
I was like, no. No. So absolutely. Community policing is about, um, partnering with different organizations and rather having solely the police be kind of, um, responsible for this. It's a shared responsibility among multiple organizations. Um, and I think there are some ways that we're already doing the positive steps toward this. In some ways we could improve. Um, the police has, uh, now they partner with the guidance center to have a mental health responder who is available sometimes to respond to calls involving maybe suicide, suicidal ideation. Um, and they've made over 1,400 contacts. That's not necessarily individual calls. Sometimes it's follow-ups. But that is so huge and so important because if it is a mental health problem, it's just going to happen again. Um, when they get out of prison. So addressing that in the long term is wonderful too. Also partnering with the Leavenworth Interfaith Community of Hope, which deals with the homeless population because there's a good portion of police calls that deal with the homeless. And so making sure that we have eyes on that and seeing what we can do in the long term to help these situations. And finally, I think community policing could be a great help in the growing fentanyl crisis. Um, there was a toddler who passed away. Um, I think it was either earlier this year or last year, um, due to fentanyl. Um, and it's, it's terrible and it's becoming really dangerous. It's, the drugs are becoming to the point where even Narcan isn't helping anymore. That's how sophisticated they're getting. And so I think community policing is another thing that we can do. Um, even though it can be kind of a buzzword, it just basically means partnering as a community and all taking a shared responsibility for some of these things, which I think is important.
I like community policing, working with your police officers, but I also feel like it covers more than just that. I mean, policing just the area, like picking up trash or reporting a pothole. You know, telling people, hey, this, this is wrong over here. I think community policing is more than just, you know, dealing with crime and, and bad intentions of people. I think it's just, you know, helping out the city with, they're short-staffed. We're down what? Nine officers, I think, and a whole bunch of city staff in the service center. So the more information they have all across the board, the better off we'll be. We'll be able to hopefully get more efficient in the service center if I get in there. Cause I can kind of teach them some ways to help out with just efficiency, because I gotta be efficient in my job or I won't have a job. This, this needs to kind of carry over into the city. The city's, any government opportunity, entity, they always have that government mentality. Like, yeah, we'll get to it tomorrow or we'll do it later. No, we need to be more proactive instead of reactive. We need to get on these issues as they're coming up to help keep things nice and to avoid big catastrophes.
These are all great ideas. Um, the goal behind community policing is putting law enforcement officers into our community where they get to know the people that they're serving. And those people feel like they can speak to that police officer because they know him. We're talking about cops on bikes that are all over the downtown that are in areas where we're walking and living. And it would be, it's a great idea. Uh, it's worked well in a lot of communities. But like Sam said, we're down nine police officers. We are a training ground um, for other communities who come and take our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, because they come here to get the, the accreditations and then they move on because they can be paid more. Goes back to our problem where we can't afford to keep the good people. So we're spending more money retraining people. Community placing is great. It gives offers communities or different areas of community, somebody that they can talk to about the issues. So they can give the law enforcement insight into what's going on in those areas. But we have a mental health crisis in our community, um, with a lot of the homeless and the drug problem. And so what we need to do, um, is find ways that we can give law enforcement the tools that they need to be able to address a lot of these issues. We could fill up our jail just arresting homeless. That doesn't solve the problem. The problem doesn't go away. It takes it away from our, our view for now, but it doesn't make the problem go away. So we need to look at ways that we can start to help law enforcement, help the community, solve some of our issues that we have, mental health wise, drug wise. Uh, but I think it all starts with, um, being able to pay law enforcement, what they deserve so that they'll stay here and make a career.
Thank you all very much. All right. We're going to open it up to your questions. Who would like to ask the first question? Don't be shy.
I have one.
Yes, please.
If you should be elected to the city commission, what would be your principles or tenants to fulfill your responsibilities, uh, to serve the citizens of Leavenworth? In terms of governing, governing as a body? Your, your principles with respect to how you will govern when you are elected and sit on that dais in the city? What, what principles will you adhere to or?
If it makes sense to me and it's morally right and it's going to do the city good, then we're going to do it. I, I'm not here to play games, do anything political. I'm just here to work. I, I'm literally a workhorse for you guys. I'm not going to play around with anything that does not make sense. I'm not here to hurt the community. I'm here to help the community.
I, I would echo that. Uh, you know, uh, my focus is, is going to be on trying to, uh, do the best job I can, uh, for the community. Uh, I really want to be able to pull like I said, uh, in, in terms of working on the, the economic aspects of, uh, of Leavenworth, providing Leavenworth a vision and so forth for, for improving the community. Uh, and that goes for everything that we do. Uh, and, and, you know, she'd mentioned, Rebecca had mentioned, talked about transparency. Yeah, we need to do that as well. We need to be able to layer cards on the table and say, this is what we're all about. And if it isn't, if you aren't doing it with the thing in mind, and there may be people who disagree with you, but if you're not doing it, then the idea in mind that I'm doing this to try and make this community better, then you're not doing it for the right reason.
I would say integrity is huge. Um, it's a huge principle, doing the right thing, both when you're on the dais and on the dais and when you're off the dais. And I would say accountability is going to be big for me, too. And that's why I really enjoy going out and talking to the community and posting on social media and just making myself as available as possible. Whether it's through phone calls or email newsletters or mail newsletters, I want to make sure that I am holding myself to the standard that I know the voters hold us to, not just in election season, but throughout my entire time on the city commission, should I choose to be elected. And then respect, I think that it, we're in a difficult environment politically, and this has not been a difficult environment, which is great, and I hope that continues. But making sure to respect all Leavenworth citizens, including those I disagree with, making sure to be open to hearing different opinions, being polite, just kind of those basics. Sometimes it's really important to go back to the basics in that way. So, yeah.
A very good friend of mine said, character is what you do when God, only God is watching. And so I think having high character is the first thing that we need to be sure that we have. As a business owner, I work in IT. I'm an IT consultant. I spend a lot of time not talking and listening to what my clients are saying, so I can understand what the problem is, not trying to anticipate what the problem is, not trying to decide what the problem is, but hearing what they're saying the problem is. And so with that, I think being a great listener is a, is an important tenant, being able to work with anyone on anything at any time, not, not doing political theater or spouting off political catchphrases because I'm worried about the next election, because I'm not. I'm here to go to work. And like I've said, I'm not, I'm not a politician. I'm here to go to work for my community and do what's best for my community. And so my focus is on what's going on now. How can we start to solve the problem and not kick the can down the road?
Next question. Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of what's going on now, what are your feelings about on the present city commission is handling the Core Civic problem?
Is it okay if I start? I was just going to get this one out of the way because I was waiting for this question to come up. I think it's an interesting, it's an interesting question, because I think people want to know, are we going through the process we're going through simply because we're pushing back against the current administration? And we're fighting that because we don't agree with it? Are we going down this road because we want people to follow the rules? At the end of the day, the only people making out on this deal are the attorneys. And they're taking the money from our city and they're profiting. And as long as we're not sitting down talking with anybody, they're going to continue to profit. So what we need to do is we need to sit down and we need to talk with Core Civic. We need to come to some type of resolution to move forward and stop paying attorneys.
To be honest with you, I think they would have already been open right now had they gone through the correct process. If they hadn't pulled their special use permit, they probably would have made it through. There was only a couple of things that would have held them up. We kind of govern ourselves on the golden factors for businesses. Okay. There is one thing that held me up on that, and that was for the infrastructure. Now, they probably could have solved that pretty quick, and they would have done moved on and probably been open by now. But instead, we have to go through the long drawn out process of their grandfathered in. No, they're not. They shut down. Bydam shut them down. And it's a completely different operation now. Now you're using ICE instead of the Marshals. So, I mean, eventually somebody's got to give and come back to the table and talk. I mean, it's going to happen. Yeah, it's the infrastructure. That's the only thing that I see where it could cost the people money, because our taxpayer money pays for all of that infrastructure up there, and it is aging. And if you go and add another 26,000 gallons of water a day to an aging infrastructure, that is another pump house, you're gonna, there's, there might be some issues, but they're solvable. And if we solve it, then we get the tax base off of them. We could get some money out of them to help with our infrastructure. They offered money to, you know, pay for the police department to come up there. I think an annual fee is what was on the table. They were willing to work with us, but I, they just need to be willing to go through the process, and I don't see where they will have a problem opening.
This is a very interesting situation. I will tell you that I have talked with a number of people. I've talked with Chief Kitchens. I've talked with Scott Peterson and Penny Haller to get the city side of, in fact, Ed Hingula as well, to get to kind of the city side of what's going on. Today, I've talked with Ward Mackey. Today, I talked with a gentleman by the name of John Mallory, who was the negotiator with the chief and Scott, and sat, they, those guys sat down and they came up with an acceptable plan for both the city and the, and Core Civic. Now, I'm not going to go on the ins and outs of, you know, who's right and who's wrong and who shot John and everything. But what I can tell you is that this thing needs to get pretty resolved pretty soon, because it's a win-win for the city to have Core Civic open. It's a win-win. $150,000 a year going to the police department. You know, we're short, as we said, nine police officers. They probably won't hire nine. It could give every one of those guys a pay raise and make them a little more competitive. You know, $250,000 to the city, a million dollars a year on tax revenues, plus upfront a million dollar gratis from Core Civic to the city. We need that money. So I see, and, you know, they've already, they've already hired 130, 150 people, whatever it is, and they've got another 100 and whatever it is, 150, 170 that they can hire, once they start opening up and start bringing detainees in. I will tell you, you'll be surprised if you, they had an open house that you could go to and get their side of the story, and hardly anybody showed up. I think one commissioner showed up. All right. There, John Mallory told me today, he's willing to sit down as soon as possible with the city to get this thing done so they can get, get it open. And if they get it open, the city starts benefiting from it.
Yeah, this is, I would say, the number three issue I hear most often at the doors, which is a little bit surprising, I think in some respects, but not in others. There are a lot of different concerns. There are concerns about the infrastructure. There are concerns about the public safety aspect of the situation. There are concerns about the past and what Core Civic, how they've operated in the past and how they're currently operating in other states. And, you know, as far as the special use permit, I think clearly it's, it's good to get kind of the legal answer to this problem in case it ever does come up again. But at the same time, I know that we can't, we don't have the money to spend on infinite court fees, and we can't do that forever. So I think dialogue is absolutely important. And if I were elected to the city commission, I would certainly be willing to, to sit down and see if we can come up with a plan where the public can still have their input, because that was going to be really important, that the public hearing was going to take place. So somewhere where the public could still have their input, where we can maybe address some of those safety concerns. You know, it's, it's very early for all of this, and I still have a lot of concerns about Core Civic and their operation personally. But the one thing I can say is that dialogue is going to be absolutely essential in resolving this problem so that it doesn't tie up money. And so like Joe says, the, just the attorneys aren't just benefiting, benefiting from it and, you know, going all the way to the bank with it. So dialogue is going to be important, but concerns that the public has and that, you know, infrastructure, public safety, those will still need to be addressed as well.
Next question. Yes, sir.
Obvious disclaimer. Steve and I are good friends and I'm his treasure. But for all four candidates.
I gotta watch him closely, by the way.
Yeah. He keeps wondering if we're going to escape to the Cayman Islands or something. But for all four of you, there's so much in common, and especially when you're talking about economic growth and so on. Can you maybe name some one thing that would differentiate you from other candidates here? And, you know, two of you may still agree or whatever, but I'm just, I'm looking for maybe we make, making a choice, what's different between you guys? Because you have so much in common.
Well, first of all, Rebecca is much more attractive than the rest of us.
I was gonna say, I have the most hair.
Uh-oh, making fun of Sam.
I don't know. I guess if I were to pick out one thing that, that would differentiate me from, from everybody else here up front here, I would say it would be my, 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 my background, my planning, you know, leadership, research and analysis experience that I would bring to the table. Because, you know, a lot of what we have to do to fix some of the issues that the city are facing is understand what the problem is. You know, that's the first step of problem solving. Understand the issue, understand the problem. And, and that takes some research and analysis. You can't just say, assume what you see is the problem, because sometimes there's levels deeper that make it more complicated than you think it is initially. And I think that like this, this Core Civic thing is a perfect example of it. When, when you start digging into it, you start finding that there, there, like, for example, Sam today talked about the, the infrastructure issues, particularly the sewage problems with it. I wasn't aware of that. Okay. So it's nice to know that that part of the decision-making process, how does that fit into it all? So that's how I would say I would differentiate from anybody else up here.
Mine is the blue collar side of it. I mean, I've got 20 plus years in infrastructure. My knowledge is vast, and I have many resources I can pull, pull from to kind of get better answers. And I can break it down for people so they understand. I do this on a daily basis. There's a lot of residents I work in front of. Why are you doing that? We got to make sure this works to this, to this, so we have a complete project and it looks good and it's going to last you a while. So, I mean, just my knowledge and efficiency in infrastructure and building would feel greatly help the city and the constituents that we have.
I'm a business guy. I've started a couple of businesses in town. I have a lot of experience in building a business and growing a business. I have a lot of experience in IT leadership. I'm probably the most technical of everyone up here with my IT background. I've got a bachelor's in IT as well as a, I started a master's in organizational leadership. I think that, you know, what I really bring to the table is the ability to problem solve and look at things from a very technical aspect and solving problems and finding ways to use technology to do some of the heavy lifting for us, data analytics, AI, all those buzzwords that everybody talks about. There are different ways that we can employ those things to help us in the community and help us grow our city. And I'm definitely open to using that.
I'll bet your IT knowledge is a lot better than mine.
So first and foremost, you know, to lean into the obvious, I am young and I have, not that they're not, but I, no, 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 I, yeah, exact, there you go, you're at heart. No, I have a passion for making sure to engage the youth of the community and like the millennial and Gen Z generation. And one of the things I do that I've been really proud of throughout this race is I have what's called City in 60, which is a series where I summarize the latest city commission meeting in 60 seconds or less. And I have spoken to people and they, it's making a difference. People are now more informed about the city because of it, and they're engaging more about the city. So I also love, I'm a great communicator. I mean, I love going door to door. I do it every night except Fridays and when the Chiefs are playing. And it's something wonderful to just be able to talk to people. Service, I'm really into giving back to my community. I still spend a lot of my time volunteering, even with how busy things have gotten. And then finally, you know, at Georgetown, I studied political economy and math, and then I recently graduated with my MBA from KU. So I'm definitely a numbers person, and I know my way around a budget and numbers. So I'm excited to bring all of that to the table. And I think that's a great question, and I was going to address it in my closing statement, because we are very similar. And, you know, you do get to pick three, which is nice, but at the end of the day, there are small things that differentiate us. But again, I just want to emphasize what a great group of people that I think this is. So I appreciate that aspect of it as well.
Thank you. Last question. Who has it? Yes, ma'am.
Seeing a budget, how well do you approach revenue neutral?
That's a great question, because it just came up recently. The city did vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The county did as well, and I believe the school board did too. So it's, they were all in agreement on that at least. You know, the goal is revenue neutral, because you don't want to raise people's property taxes. However, we can't do that at the expense of kicking some of these cans down the road. That's the situation that we're in now with our aging infrastructure. So it's all about a balance, right? The city's portion of the mill levy increase that overall is going to take place really is quite, it's quite small in comparison to the county portion, the school board portion, which is good. You have to balance fiscal responsibility with providing the essential services that the city takes. And I do think that looking line by line at the budget, if you're headed toward a road that's not revenue neutral is necessary, because you want to hold yourself accountable to the people, even if it means giving up the stipend that city commissioners get per month. They get a tiny little stipend per month, even if it means giving up that, or, you know, cutting some other things. But, you know, as long as we're still providing those essential services and not making it somebody else's problem, that's one of the things that you need to look at when you look at revenue neutral. So it's not an easy answer. I think a lot of people would prefer that it's like, no, I would never raise the revenue neutral rate. My goal is to never do that, but at the end of the day, the world economy is changing so fast, and we need to make sure that our citizens are safe. But we also need to hold ourselves accountable.
You know, there's an old saying, never say never. And, but I will tell you that, that pretty much what Rebecca said, I, my goal is to never get beyond revenue neutral. I don't want to see taxes raised and so forth. And I'll give you a, a good example of the reason why. I bought my house here in Leavenworth in 1999, November. So starting with 2000, from the year of 2000 until 2024, ended 2024, the inflation rate, cumulative inflation rate in the United States was 87%, okay? So if it costs a dollar in 1990 or 2000, it costs a dollar eighty seven now, okay? Give you an idea. The inflation rate on my property since 19, or correction, 2000, has gone up 234% on the house taxes I raise. Okay. That, my question for that is why? If we're trying to just kind of keep along with inflation, I realize some years we need to do more than that and so forth. But that's way beyond, I mean, it's more than double. What are we doing with all that money? Okay. Again, we have some problems that we have to address. And I realize, as Rebecca said, there may be times where we have to, we have to, you know, get more than the, than the revenue neutral rate. But if there's any way possible, I'm going to keep that down. Because, again, that goes back to, we're going to be losing population. We got people that are getting to the point where they can no longer afford to stay here. Okay. Because they can't afford, you know, if there are fixed incomes, and we have a lot of folks on fixed incomes here, and particularly white retirees and so forth, they're having a tough time, you know. So if, if we don't go back to getting to, you know, what I said before, there it is, broken record, getting to economic development here, we're just not going to get there.
The beautiful thing about the city is it's mainly sales tax. So when you're talking revenue neutral, it's a beautiful thing, because one, it sends out that flyer saying, hey, we're probably going to exceed this. And it gives you a breakdown as to why. City sits at 20 mills. The school and the county both are sitting between 40 and 50 mills, I believe. So the city's really not raising your property taxes that much. Your school board and your county are, because that's what they live off of. That's the only income they basically get. Now, you also have to take into account inflation rates. You're never going to get true revenue neutral, because there is inflationary costs in everything. Okay. This brings us back to economic development. The more people we have here spending money, the more money we get off sales tax, which means less money we have to take from property tax. So, you know, this can be a community thing as far as bringing people in here. If you guys know business or somebody who wants to start something up, hey, have them come down and talk to the city. Let's see what we can do. I mean, this, this can be a community-wide thing. It doesn't have just to be on us. If you guys are really wanting to get some stuff done, we could use the help. You know, you, everybody's got different walks of life. You know, you, everybody's got different walks of life. Everybody knows different people. If we can get some, you know, spider webs out there, let's, let's do it. Let's, let's bring some businesses and some families in here. And take some of the burden off us on the property tax side of it.
It's always tough to go last because now you just sound like you're copying everybody. I agree. I mean, I would, I don't want to ever have to exceed revenue neutral, but we have to look at what the requirements are. But I think one of the things that's really helpful is, you know, before you make that decision, you have all your departments submit a revenue neutral budget. So you can look at what that looks like and make some educated decisions before you make the decision to raise taxes. But everybody's right. Leavenworth needs to be open for business and we need to make sure everybody around us knows that Leavenworth is open for business. So that we bring more businesses in, so that we can begin to do the things that we need to do without raising taxes. I have talked to a number of people in my walks when I'm in the community who've said they've had ideas to open businesses and run into stumbling blocks. And they did not feel like the city provided really good customer service. They told them what the roadblock was and stopped there. In the world I live in, you can't make a living off of that. You got to be able to provide solutions. So rather than telling people, no, you can't do this, it's let's figure it out. And I think Sam touched on that earlier. You know, it's super important. We don't just stop. You know, it's yes, but let's figure out what the, what the rest of the answer is. And let's make sure that we can get businesses into our community and that they know that we're open for business. Now I don't, I don't want to exceed revenue neutral if I don't have to. But I also want to make sure that our firefighters are paid. I want to make sure that our police officers are paid. And I think that, you know, it just starts with making sure that we're running an efficient government and that we've taken all the steps we can to make sure that we don't have to do that.
Since you started with the first introduction, why don't you start with the first closing?
How long do I have for this? A minute? I have one minute to close.
One minute closing.
Thank you all for coming. It's been an honor to speak to you. It's an honor and a privilege to run for office. I enjoy talking with people. I enjoy trying to understand how I can help improve people's lives. What I want you to remember about me is I'm a business person. I am pro-growth, pro-business and pro-first responder. But I'm also pro-people. I'm not about a party. I'm not. I'm not reporting to anybody else. I'm all about what you guys need and what we need to do to grow our community. And all I want to do is roll my sleeves up and go to work.
Yes. Thank you guys for coming out. Senator Clamp, appreciate you. The chamber, thank you for putting this on and you guys coming out. I mean, you guys are the reason why we're here. We're here to help make this community a better place and to serve you guys. I am a blue collar worker. That's all I know. Let's work, let's overcome the problems and let's move on with life. Let's set this town up for a better future for the kids that are going to be here. I want my generations to call us home for a long time. So it's kind of really part of me right now that I make this happen, that I get a number five, six or seven on the Samuels. I am the fourth. So let's, let's, let's work together and let's get this done.
I, I like the others and I'm sure Rebecca's going to do the same thing. Again, thank you both so much for, to the Chamber of Commerce for inviting us. And for you folks coming out and all this, you know, really rainy weather and so forth and sitting in this rather cold room. Anybody here cold? And sitting through it, we hadn't had anybody leave, so we must have been fascinating, you think? I'm not going to, you know, pound my chest or anything. I kind of told you my background, what I, what I bring to the table. But I do look forward, if I'm elected, to serve the, the community because that's what service means. I mean, you're not, we're not out here for ourselves, obviously. In fact, I didn't even know we were supposed to get a stipend. I always thought I was going to do all this for free. But the point being that that's what I'm here for. I'm here to serve the community and that's what I want to do. So I hope you give me a chance and again, thank you very much.
Part of the reason why I, I feel so indebted to this community, when I was 15, I had a column in the Leavenworth Times. Please don't go look it up. I don't remember what all I said, but I had so many community members guide me and mentor me because that was kind of the first time I was really getting to like the nitty gritty of our city. That was a terrible rhyme, but and I, I'm so grateful for this community for making me love Leavenworth so much. And I want to do the same thing for others. So I'm so grateful to have this opportunity to run. I do have a detailed issues page on my website that has solutions for how I would do things. Because I know it's easy to say, oh, we love economic development, but how do we do it? So please check that out. It's voteholister.com and I'm an open book too. My contact information's on there if you ever have any questions or concerns. And thank you all so much again for coming out. I really appreciate it and I appreciate these guys up here too.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you all make a thank you? Thank you all for coming this evening. If you're up for it tomorrow is same place, same time. We have the candidate forum for USD 453. That's tomorrow. Next Wednesday, if you want to do it again, is USD 469. And two weeks from tomorrow, we do the water board. So we've got three more coming up. Thank you all for coming this evening. Appreciate it.